Okay. So, um, welcome back. So, the second topic we're, um, we're going to talk about this evening is the 90 percent, the 65 percent as they've come to be characterized, the override scenarios for, for what's in front of the Board of Selectmen for FY 2016 through FY 2018. So, let me, let me, let me sort of set the context for this first. This is an oldie but goodie. This goes all the way back to the Advisory Committee, I understand, in terms of the, one of the presentations to the Advisory Committee about the override. And you saw in that presentation, I used this in our first presentation with the Board of Selectmen as well, what we were looking at in terms of the, of the, of the problem, if you will, as laid out against our models that we had put forward of staffing and other, other areas under the, under certain enrollment assumptions going forward. And essentially, at a 1 percent collective bargaining agreement, that original gap, I'll use that word, was 12.3 million, and a 2 percent was 14.5. And it made certain assumptions about steps, about special education costs, health insurance increases, et cetera. Now, one of the things I want to say here, and we'll say a number of times throughout this, is that some of those things have been changed. Mr. Cronin has modified some of those, those assumptions. We pushed hard, if you remember, in terms of that original presentation on two things. One was the one-time money that's currently in our operating budget, and the second was on the 1 percent assumption for all three years, FY 16 through FY 18. And so, what you see at the bottom is Group 1 and Group 2 in terms of, from the Override Study Committee, in terms of the numbers that they put forward for, for an override, for a revenue override of 5 million versus 7.9. The 2.9 million that's there in non-tax revenue and reduction on the town side in terms of expenditures of 2.9 was consistent across the two groups. And, and what we looked at then was the, was the gap, right? So, we looked at the gap in that, in that next box with a 2 percent collective bargaining increase being 6.6 million for the Group 1 set of assumptions, 3.8 million for the Group 2. But when we added in what we have out there now in terms of one-time money, it increased each of those by a million to 7.6 and 4.8. This was, this was the model that showed the gaps between Group 1 and Group 2 over the three-year period. And then, we also put forward this, where we started with those assumptions of what they, they laid out in terms of gaps. We added in an assumption of 2 percent collective bargaining instead of 1 percent, and that left you with these gaps of 6.7 and 3.8. We added in the $1 million of reserve, of reserves that are in our current operating budget, and it left you with, with gaps of 7.7 for the Group 1 set of assumptions and 4.8 for Group 2. And that's how we left our conversations with the Board of Selectmen in that first presentation. They, at that point, said, can you come back? Can you talk about your model? Can you talk about these two sets of assumptions? Can you talk about what you'd be able to do within them? And that's when conversations began about, is this a hard number or is it a model, right? Is it, is it truly 5 million and 7.9? Or are we talking about a 65 percent given this new set of assumptions and a 90 percent given this new set of assumptions? Then Mr. Cronin looked and adjusted things like health insurance and some other town-based revenues, other things within it, and all of those pieces were factored in, and that's why it says actual gap with adjusted revenue, updated cost projection as of 10/23 at a 2 percent collective bargaining. So, it showed that funding gap actually being 14.2 at the 2 percent. It showed that, using those percentages, the 65 percent model, the 90 percent model, that those overrides, when combined with the revenue and expenditure adjustments, actually were 9.2 million and 12.8 million, which left us, in terms of taking our model, right? Adjusting our model and new information that's come to us since, and you're going to see some new pieces of information that have come to us since, that in Group 1's model, we would have a $5 million gap between our model and the amount of funding proposed through this 65 percent group assumption. And in the Group 2 assumption, the 90 percent assumption, again, taking into account what they would support in terms of a revenue, of, of an override, and the, the town revenue assumptions, we were left with about a $1.4 million gap to try to close. So, what we've done for you this evening, and I'll take you a little bit, through a little bit of the detail of how we got there, what we've done for you this evening is, is, is tried to work to those numbers, using our beliefs, using our programs, using what we believe those programs accomplished for the district, and attempting to create two models that work in as much as they work. Okay? There's obviously a lot of refinement to go on between, over the next week or so, but remember that the other piece we're shooting toward is a November 10 discussion with the Board of Selectmen as to where we are with these conversations. So, again, we've said all along, this is a slide from that presentation with them, that there were three sort of buckets of decisions that could be made in terms of getting at these numbers, right? You could look at the model, and you could choose to create different ratios in the model or to curtail or reduce certain initiatives in the model. That's one set of assumptions. You could look at programs that we currently operate, right? And, and you could identify things in, in, in those categories. Although, we pointed out that evening that the Override Study Committee does report, does contain a statement about the number of consolidations, elimination of certain positions, that we've been successful at operating with less, yet still producing great results for students. And the third category is looking at these programs, these policies, these beliefs, and making adjustments in them. Or you could do some combination of all three. We were, because we talked about this in our workshop last week, we were cognizant of our strategic plan, our core values, making sure that as much as possible, what we put forward to talk with you about aligned with those core values, and quite frankly, where it doesn't, that we, that we point that out to you. Because I'll, I'll give you a headline that I don't think surprises you, that we had, we had a bit of a challenge in meeting the expectations of the Group 1 model. So, let me walk you through the 90 percent scenario. And I know one of the things that we talked about is we didn't, we didn't want to have a deep conversation about .2 FTEs, and neither do I, but I think this will give you an idea of where we are in relation to the initial model that was put forward in some of these areas, some things that have come up, new information. We have a, a, a program review on enrichment and challenge support that we're on the way to receiving, that we've actually baked in some assumptions here. I talked in the first presentation about additional rentals. We've baked in some assumptions around rentals above the $550,000 into this model. And quite frankly, in the second model, we've taken some liberties with that, that we've discussed with Mr. Cronin already. So, let me walk you through this. So, we increased staffing for guidance counselors and psychologists, and we've actually laid out the years. I, I don't know if they're hard and fast. Again, they were based on certain assumptions in terms of enrollments. By 8.0, the original model was based on a different ratio. It would have actually driven more, but, but we, we, we believed that we could get somewhere in accomplishing what we were trying to accomplish across the elementary schools, the high school at, at this number of 8.0. We increased the high school administration by 2.0. The initial model, I think, was 4. But again, what's happened to us since, in some of the modeling that we've looked at, is the high school you've seen increases at a percentage that's slower, slower rate of increase. So, we've, we felt that some of those could go into discussions beyond FY 18. We increased K-8 classroom staffing to reflect the revised enrollment patterns, including an allowance for one classroom consolidation each year. So, we're consistent here with the plan that we just discussed with you in terms of assuming a consolidation each year. Remember that a consolidation at the elementary level is 1.3 FTE. An add is 1.3, a consolidation is 1.3, okay, in terms of the modeling. We increased Brookline High School classroom staffing to reflect revised enrollment patterns. So, we took a look at those patterns in the 4th through 8th grade, and we made adjustments to those numbers at the high school to reflect those increases in high school staffing. We increased K-8 vice principals by 1. That's Old Lincoln, right? And it comes in, could become, it comes in FY 16, which may actually be 17. We're not sure yet, but it'd be one of those two years. We increased the central administration by three positions over the base of the 21 FTE that we currently have there, and the specifics, as you know, will come from the discussion about our Administration and Compensation Study recommendations, which we expect in January. We increased instructional materials and supplies by 4 percent, which was a lesser percent. Mr. Rowe, the original, can you just help me with what that was? Instructional supply?
Yeah, 10.
10, the first year, and 5 every year after. We had to scale that back to meet the 90 percent model to 4 percent increase in instructional supplies and materials each year. We increased staffing for school nurses by 2.0 instead of 3.3, as you would find in the model. We increased staffing for the Elementary World Language, again, to maintain enrollment, the K through 5 model. We increased the allocation for custodial repair and maintenance by the $170,000 that I believe was in the original model. We, we had, I think we had a good logic model in there about the increased amount of square footage around Old Lincoln School and those kinds of things that we were going to need to, to address. We increased related services, student services by 13.3 in areas in occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, board-certified behavior specialists, team facilitator roles. And as was pointed out by the Override Study Committee, number, number of those things are regular education interventions. Regular education interventions, not what I would categorize as special education. We implemented the, the three years of the technology plan, the 1.54 million dollars across the three years from 16 through 18, and we included the addition of 2.0 FTE to enhance the Steps to Success model by extending the program into primary grades, expanding the program beyond public housing, or making other changes after, and I would underline "after," a program evaluation. Because I think, I think which way to go with that is, is still, is still open for debate, even among the Board. We, we lowered the amount that we targeted for innovation funding to $100,000. It was some figure above that when we started that conversation, and increased it by 10 percent over 17 and 18 so that we can use monies to incent teachers to apply for innovation grants and then model them for, for colleagues. That was a goal of, of ours from the beginning of this discussion. We implemented the middle-level model for Elementary World Language in Grade 6, which is right now three-day-a-week, but we implemented it as a five-day-a-week. That's an additional 1.8 FTE. We brought that on in this model in FY 17. We increased the literacy specialist staffing by the 8.0, designed to fully implement the literacy intervention model across all of our K-8 schools. That was the number we identified upfront that would implement that across our schools. We've included that as a program improvement in this model. By the way, the thing I should have pointed out is you'll see that we've actually broken these into different categories. The first three pages of this were all enrollment, specifically enrollment-driven. Then we got to a list that includes program improvements, although quite frankly, some could argue that some of these things might be both. Mass specialists, we, we fully implemented the intervention and coaching model across all of our K-8 schools with 7.6 FTE. And we increased enrichment and challenge support program staffing as recommended in the Program Review Committee to enhance the program across all of our K-8 schools. The recommendations, the preliminary work that we're looking at now includes 1.5 building-based teachers, expanding the coordinator position to full-time, and adding 1.6 FTE mathematics specialists associated with. And I'll leave that discussion of that set of recommendations to the Curriculum Subcommittee for, for down the road for now. The base assumptions here, remember, from the model, were that we would increase special education expenditures by $2.3 million over, over that period of time. That was included in any of the base models, that we would include $550,000 for rental of leased space for our early education classes currently located in non-public spaces, along with an additional $200,000 for rental of space for some of the other things that we talked about earlier tonight. And that we included an assumption of $679,000 in startup costs to open the Old Lincoln School. That's been in the base model from the beginning of this. We had a discussion, I believe, with you last year about what made up that $679,000. And that, that would be the 90 percent model. So, why don't we do this a little differently? Why don't we stop there on the 90 percent model? Because what I have for you from here is, is one version, it can be one version, of the 65 percent model, and then a comparison of the two. I have both of those in the slides.
I have, I have actually two questions on the ECS program. The mathematics specialists will be specifically ECS math specialists, or will they be?
So, it's an increase in, so, with the microphone, an increase in the mass specialist number so, so that they can attend to those issues with that program, that kind of coaching and, and intervention model with students.
But is that a 1.6 greater increase over the previous item where we're increasing?
It is. It's a different 1.6.
A different 1.6. And are all of those designed for increase in, in the first year?
Don't know yet. I mean, Mr. Cronin will be very interested in that, should this be where we land in terms of actually looking, if you recall from his modeling, actually looking at where he's spending money and, and where money might be available after the first year, not, not spent by the schools till year 2 or year 3. But we're not there on that piece yet. As much as I can get specific for you on some of these other things, we're very, very early in that discussion. But, we didn't, but, but, we didn't want to not include it, right? We want it in this, in this modeling so that, because it's been a very important topic of conversation, right? A very important program review, and you're going to be discussing it this year, and for it not to be actually modeled in this next three-year, a program wouldn't suffice.
So, I have a question about the Old Lincoln School startup costs?
Yes.
And it's, you know, I'm not sure who should pay for, Peter or Paul here. But in most of our schools where we've had temporary locations for students, those costs were under the, the building costs of the new school. Here, we're putting it separate, and I don't know if it makes a difference, or are these different kinds of costs than what?
Do you want to speak to this?
I mean, either way, we have to spend the money. I'm not questioning that, and I'm not sure where it should go, to be honest.
The answer to your question is it's varied over time. For instance, you may remember when we did the 9th grade school at the Old Lincoln School for the high school?
Yeah.
We added to the high school project some staff increases for the high school for a couple of years.
Right.
That's really the only model that I can recall where we actually added operating staff. In the Runkel, in the Runkel model?
VP at Runkel.
That's right. We did, we did a part VP at Runkel. I can't remember doing one for Heath.
Did?
Yeah.
And we did, and you did one for a long series?
Did we? Okay. So, there's two examples where we did a, a piece of a, of a staff member.
But it was a piece of one staff member.
Yeah. For, so, the answer to your question, though, is that the 679,000 was based on saying, to open a new school, in addition to a principal and a vice principal, we would assume we'd need office staff, custodial staff, northeastern aid staff, food service staff, those, you know, the, the, the basics of op, opening a school. So, that's what it was based on.
And because we have two different sites, the, the costs that we would have incurred at the, the devotion school.
Well, those are the additional costs. Those are the additional costs of operating a site. The teachers for 7th and 8th grade are assumed to be pulled from devotion and moved to Old Lincoln School as a neutral. If you could, right?
Yes, 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 yes.
That's a stretch potentially, but that's at least the working assumption we have right now.
Right.
And that same model, that same model would have to be true of a second school if we chose to do that in order to, to have a, a neutral cost.
Let me just, let me just say this, right? He, Mr. Rowe is absolutely right.
I get it.
Except that it's a little bit above, right? For, for people who come from 7th and 8th grade who teach social studies, that, that's, that's a straight move, right? Where it gets complicated, and we've discussed this before, right, is in world languages, for example, where somebody may also teach in the 6th grade or other parts of the elementary, and what we're left to do is try to extract pieces of FTE. And it may be easier in some cases, depending on the number of students at the building. And this is where, Ms. Dickoff, you said earlier about the, 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 the need to make some of these decisions sooner rather than later. So, we're starting to talk about staffing, right, patterns at the building. If we're going to, if, if we're going to include another school in that, it might change everything in terms of certain things like a world language, right? So, we're going to have to go ahead and start making decisions based on 7th and 8th grade that I hope hold till spring. And that might mean adding staff, extracting pieces of staffing, those kinds of things. So, it's a little bit of both, depending on the positions.
Thank you.
Great question. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lupini. I just have a question on the slide about the increase in K through 8 classroom staffing, which also mentioned an assumption of including a allowance for one classroom consolidation per year. And one classroom consolidation, as you mentioned, is about 1.3 FTEs. So, the 6.5 in 16, 7.8 in 17, 3.9 in 18, does that include the 1.3 consolidation pickup per year that is in that number?
Yes.
It does?
Yes. It's a net.
So, so my next question is, what is the assumption on the average class size for K through 8 for that period?
Same assumption that was in our earlier presentation of 22 and 25, as, as upper limits, not, not averages, but as upper limits. Same, same, same assumption. We had 31 kindergartens each year, and we bring in 650 students. That's the assumption.
Thank you.
For others, thank you. Bill, I, I know, I know how hard this is to do, and so, I'm sure that what I'm about to ask you doesn't have an answer, but it's sort of what I'm feeling I really need in order to be able to process all of this. So, this is the 90 percent scenario.
It is.
And we've got things like increased staffing for guidance counselors and psychologists by 8, right? Which, in light of enrollment growth, strikes me as a really important place for us to be investing. Materials and supplies, I, at 4 percent. I'm, I'm trying to get a context for this, the school nurses, the Elementary World Language, even custodial repair and maintenance, I'm, and, and the technology plan. I guess what I'm trying to understand is, what aren't we able to do? To what extent are what you've, is what you've put out here at 90 percent not allowing us to do what we hope to do for our students? In particular, around what I would consider essential supports, again, in, in larger schools, especially around guidance and, and psychologists, but, but even, but even for something like technology, which I know, you know, we had already scaled back sort of our ambitions for the technology plan. This, I assume, is a further scaling back because it's pitched at 90 percent. The question is, where's the, where, where, what are, what aren't we able to do with this?
So, um, let me give a caveat of this, right? We, we haven't done what we did in the model, where we actually made certain assumptions about enrollments at schools and drove it out that way. So, we, we haven't said, okay, at this amount of increase for guidance and psychologists, which, again, you know, in the model, we, we, we talked about providing the same sort of ballpark of services, right? So, we, we haven't, we haven't said, like we did in that model, we assume that by that time Driscoll is a school of X, and therefore, that means that they have Y. Lincoln is a school of Z. It hasn't, it has staffing in this area of that. We haven't done that. We haven't done that. But we're, but we're close enough in many of these areas, and in fact, in some of these areas, we, we, we did not just apply a 90 percent across the board. I hope, I hope I made that clear upfront, because I'll, I'll go back through some areas, right? We didn't do that. We, we, we looked at some areas, we looked at what we were anticipating in the third year of some of them, and, you know, we tried to look at the ratio and say, well, what if the ratio were 1 to 600 instead of 1 to 500? I mean, it's not, some of them are not at, like, this area is one that's not at the standard of the Professional Association. We weren't able to do that, right? It was, I think it was 10.3, if I recall the, the FTE. And we used everything except the original FY 18 number in that area. The nurse area was an area that we added 2 instead of 3.3, right? So, we didn't use the 1 to 500. I think we scaled it at 1 to 600 instead. And you'll recall that we created our own ratio for that one. It was actually a ratio that said, it's actually 1 to 350 for these students and 1 to 600 for these, those kinds of things. So, we applied a different standard and, and had some conversations, right, about whether that was something we could figure out in terms of, of applying it. And in other areas, we said, well, if we're going to, if we're going to implement this literacy initiative, we're going to implement this literacy initiative, right? And, and, and while we may be able, not even be able to do that in the 65 percent model, we believe, we didn't predict any of this, we didn't make an assumption, that there may be some reductions in other areas as a result of implementing that and implementing it well. I, I think I've said to this committee before that some districts have seen a decrease in costs in special education as a result of that literacy initiative. Maybe we have those, and we can bake those back in. We didn't make assumptions about them here, but we certainly, they're certainly on our minds. So, so that's how we went at this. The technology plan is, is the original 2.5. Not the, the original was more than 2.5. Is the 2.5. We did not compromise that, and I'll tell you, we didn't compromise it in the 65 percent model.
So, so where are the compromises?
Well, I've highlighted a number of them. Guidance and, and, so we can lay out the original model. We've not done, done that here. We can easily add the original model and how it stacks up, so you'd have three comparisons, the original model, the 90, the 65. That's easy enough to do, right? But, but it lay, it's, it's in, there's a, there's a reduction in the high school administration. There's some reduction as a result of consolidations in, assumption in the K to 8. There's a, there's a reduction in the high school staffing as a result of, of us applying that ratio. There's a reduction in central office. There's a reduction in K to 8. There's a reduction in the instructional materials and supplies that I mentioned earlier, in staffing for nurses, in, in, I think that's, and in the, and in the grade 2 paraprofessionals.
Okay.
That grade 2 paraprofessional model. As, I mean, off the top of my head, without having them laid out here as the model, that's where they are.
So, when you say that, so that's a great example, because that's an area where I really think we need to be pushing to get there. So, you're saying that even at 90 percent, we would not get to the, the second grade, the, sorry, the second grade paraprofessional?
That's correct.
In the classroom?
That's correct.
Okay. So, so that's, that, to me, is, this is the kind of, exactly the kind of thing I'm looking for. That, to me, is really significant.
Yep.
Because that's been a tremendously successful initiative, and I worry a lot about not being able to move forward with it. There was one other thing you mentioned, and now I'm going to forget what it was. Oh, in terms of, in terms of Elementary World Language?
Yes.
I know that, you know, we're expanding the, the upper grades, so, no, are, are we doing extra time? We wanted, we wanted to play with that, right?
We took 6th grade to our middle-level model.
To our middle-level model.
45-minute period.
Okay.
But we were only able to provide 3, which is a bit of a scheduling issue.
Okay. So, that's scheduling. So, in terms of the increase that you're putting towards Elementary World Language, are we going to be able to?
We accomplished two things with these two recommendations.
Grow that, grow that program the way we would want to.
We accomplished two things with this recommendation, right? Two things.
Yeah.
We, we keep pace with our section growth at the elem, because there's two recommendations here. We keep pace with our growth in sections at K through 5, right? And we expand 6th grade to 5 times a week.
Right. No, 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 I understand, I understand that.
Well, hear me out, because I'm not, I'm not done yet.
Okay.
So, then we have a choice. At that point, we have a choice. There is some FTE, well, we don't think it's much, associated with, can we then begin to offer 6th graders a choice of a language? Do they need to stay in the same model, which is everyone takes fill-in-the-blank, or can they do what the 7th and 8th grade does? And, and it's close enough in terms of the FTE that we didn't have to bake anything else in there, but that's another else in there, but that's another decision. And again, as we play this out a little bit more, and as I said last week, we have to be able, be able to add in some of those value-added pieces that you might be able to get from some of these, from some of these recommendations. But we would be able to accomplish both of those things and if we chose, if we chose that third piece as well, and again, I, I know that our coordinators have some feelings about that, right, within these numbers.
Okay. And one final question that came up at a recent subcommittee meeting. What about the expansion to other schools in the system of the landmark program? Where is that in these numbers? Because I know that's been a, that's been something we've been scaling back on.
Yeah. So it's there, but it's there because pro, the program rolls, right? We, we, we may have to devote some of the additional dollars we have here in professional development or as one of those areas to it in order to accelerate the roll, but it's, it's baked into a roll. So they're meant to be at a school for three years and then move on. So some of the original money that we used at Lawrence became the money we're, we're using at Baker. Next year, when school X, Driscoll is through their three years, we can roll that money on to Pierce or wherever we roll that money to. Now, in order to make it move faster, what we need to do is add some sum of money to it, but it's not, it's not a six-figure number in, in terms of making it able to roll faster. It's, it's 50,000, it may be something in that neighborhood. So we can accomplish that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
In this 90% model, what has happened to library staffing and library materials?
So, um, nothing at this point. Nothing at this point, although, although, you know, as we, as we continue to play this out, and I, I should have said at the beginning of this, I apologize for the lateness of, of this. We were trying to put two pretty significant presentations together. And so we need to go back because there are some areas of, of, of interest, some ideas around some modeling. I mean, one of our, one of, I'll say right up front, one of our goals out of the last X number of budgets has been, that didn't get modeled upfront, was, is, has been to expand our hours. I mean, I've heard school committee members talk to it, we're, we're interested in it. And, and we're going to have to look at ways of dealing, you know, with the, the issues that drove us to the original cut and see if they can be dealt with in a way and for what amount of money. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's huge numbers that can expand those hours so the kids have access to the libraries till later in the afternoon. And, and it is a goal of ours to, as we play through this, to, to have that included. It was actually one of the items on our list for discussion as we were looking at the 90% model. We're not there right now.
But thank you. I'm, I'm glad to hear there's nothing that's, I'd rather have nothing happen than a reduction.
There's not a reduction.
Yeah.
There's not a reduction. Again, as I said, our, our goal would be to, because we've heard that. Again, I'm, I'm not suggesting I know what the model is, but the idea of, of those spaces open later into the afternoon in whatever configuration or modeling that, that drives that, that's a goal of ours.
So, um, one more question. Selectmen asked us to think about changes in enrollment in the original model at 630 and this is 650. Can you just talk a little bit about the impact of that because that was normal first week it is?
Um, right. So, um, I don't have those original numbers in terms of what that did, but you, you, you did that model. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure. The, um, both our FY15 current year kindergarten numbers and projecting higher kindergarten numbers in the future have moved up the demand for classroom and shifted some of the staffing that we originally had projected at the high school down to the elementaries, but in total it's moved us up. It's moved us up more in future years, 19 and 20 in our models than actually in the 16 through 18 periods. So enrollment changes actually shifted some of the resources, but really aren't as much a driver in this three-year period as they are as we go into the next couple of years after this. So, so looking at one three-year period is, in a sense, an anomaly, but the, clearly our enrollment is continuing to grow, continue to put more pressure and, and beyond the, the earlier presentation, which is space, it's, it's affecting our budget as well.
So let me see this about, about all of that. We don't, I, we said in the space presentation, and I, if I developed assumptions here, I would have included it here as well. We, we, or additional assumptions. We, we said that we use the historical patterns in terms of our enrollment. Now, that does not mean that we take our kindergarten class and say, well, okay, historically over 12 years, it's been 96.1% at fourth grade. We don't do that. The way we approximate that is we use that number and we continue it across, but we figure in that consolidation. So it's an approximation of, of, of that figured over time. And as Mr. Rowe said, we, we did increase it, which drove larger numbers at K to eight. We used the four through eight numbers, which drove slightly different numbers at, at, at the high school level, but because we continue in all the other grades to use the assumption of the number that's there now, right? Some might argue that we've created artificially high conditions in those classes. We believe it all averages out.
I'm sorry.
Really? So if we have
So can we just go back to the gap page? I think that's the one I'm getting confused about. So
Oh, two?
Six.
Two, six.
So on this page, on the, on the top of this page, the, the, the gap that said was calculated based on 630.
Yes.
And 1%.
And a 1%.
Right.
And I understand, it did not include the million dollars in one-time money.
Right.
And I understand that we added in the 2%, which is for modeling assumption, and we added in the one-time money.
Right.
But I don't see here in re-calculating the gap is the 650. And I guess what I'm hearing you say is that it's kind of baked in later, but I'm, I'm confused at the
What I'm, what I'm saying, what I'm saying again, as I said last week when we discussed this, is that the 650 compared to the 630 doesn't change the total over the three-year period by any significant amount. It shifts the allocation of resources. If we wanted to change those numbers and mo, and, and do some kind of different modeling, you could do that. But the modeling with this year's enrollment projected forward shifts resources over this three-year period. It doesn't increase it by any significant amount.
This is why it's called the weeks first. I don't, I don't fully remember that. I think that's what it was. For others, we can have
I have a, I mean, I was stuck on the question you asked, but I'm going to try and let go of it for a second and come back to that. So I, um, it goes a little bit to Rebecca's point earlier, and I imagine we will get there and I appreciate where we are in this process. So I'm not asking as if I expected all this baked today. But as we try and just understand the consequence of these numbers, it would be helpful to me in particular to, to really appreciate in, in, to some extent, narrative form, you know, what your vision and sort of things you wanted to accomplish with our original plan and how that looks different for this and for 65 in a way that helps me appreciate. So your point, for example, about the literacy initiative was really important. Like, we're saying we're committed to that.
Yeah.
That's a commitment we're making. By saying that, we, we've made other choices where we may be shifting a priority because we can't, and maybe it was a priority, maybe it wasn't, in a different area in order to make sure we do that or do something else. It would also be helpful to say that this is now shifted in terms of how we think about what we're able to accomplish with that.
Yep.
And maybe it's a, an executive summary or sorts, just to
That's fine.
Focus us, because I, this is really helpful actually to understand the details, but I do think as we go through this, it's going to be not just important for me, but I would imagine too for the selectmen and others to focus their attention.
Right. No, I'll say this to that, it's a really good point. Thank you. You know, the, the goal was in those areas that, one of these days I'm going to get to stop saying ketchup, right? So the, in those areas, the, the, the goal was to make up in some way for the fact that we'd focused on the classroom and we had neglected guidance counselors, we neglected nurses, those kinds of things.
Yep.
And, and what we set out is here, here are professional association recommendations. And, and the good news of the 90% model is we've made some real strides in those areas. Now, did we get to those formulas under the, no, we didn't, but we've, we've made some real strides and I think as we've looked at some, some examples of what some of them look like, as we play them out over some guestimates at what enrollments of buildings may be, that we've made, we've made a really serious improvement, right? We've not met one for 500, but we've made really serious improvement in those areas.
Right. Right. And I think being able to say
Yeah.
How, how we've made it, where we could have gone if we had 100%, where we're going to go if we get 90, where we're going to go with 65 would be really helpful.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Want to talk about 65? Okay, then. Hit the gavel now. You don't want to talk about 65? Okay. So, um, so remember, if I go back here, if I go way back here, the gap was another $3.6 million. That was 1.4 million. This gap is another 3.6. So we've taken that at this point through this exercise. And then I'll show you the comparison between these two. So I'll just walk you through this. So we've actually made a different assumption in terms of staffing for guidance and psychologists. There's still an increase, but it's not, it's not the increase we were able to do at the 90% and it's, and therefore it's certainly not the modeling increase. We only increased the high school administration by, by one position over this period of time. We, we still increased the K to eight staffing at those levels. That remains the same. We, we, we made a different assumption at Brookline High School, and we've talked about this, we actually talked about this last week. So the whole high school assumption was based on one teacher to every 14.25 students. We did not get any finer than that in the modeling, right? We didn't say that meant four plus one. We didn't say that meant a number of electives. If you go back to my previous presentation, all of those things that I said we might talk about are all baked into that 14.25. Does that make sense? So we ran an exercise here and said, what if that were 1 to 15? And you might say, so what does that mean? You cut. And I would say, right, still to be determined. That might be sum of four plus one. That might be some class sectioning. That might be class sizes. That might be a number of things. But again, because our enrollment wasn't increasing as much, we, we looked at that area for someplace where we might make an adjustment in this and it drove different, it drove different numbers. And again, you, you'll see that in the, in the summary. Still increased the vice principal at the old Lincoln School. We actually made a, a reduction of one of the positions at central office in that modeling. We used a 2.5% increase for instructional materials and supplies. We increased the staffing of nurses by slightly less than what we increased at, in the original model. We still increased the world language staffing for K to five, like we did elementary teachers, but I don't believe we added the sixth grade component. We did not. We did not add the sixth grade component in this model. We increased custodial repair and maintenance by, by less and we increased the related services, those, those, those regular education interventions by a considerable lesser amount. We implemented the tech, we still implemented this version of the technology plan, the 2.5 million dollar model that was in, is still there. Is still there. We made no addition to steps, steps to success in this model and we lowered the amount of innovation funding, still kept, still kept some increase over the period of time, but cut it in half in terms of the base. We were not able to, in this model, fund the literacy support or math support. So these are very much in line with our traditional non-program-based modeling in those areas. Meaning those initiatives, those, those increases in the, in the 90% model were based on what we're trying to achieve in those areas. We were not able, at least on our first couple runs through this, to make those increases there. So these are much more enrollment-driven increases to meet the numbers of students at, at buildings rather than program initiative increases. We increased the enrichment and challenge support staffing by only the enrichment and challenge support teachers in this model, not the coordinator, not the associated math We still increased the special education staffing placements, creation of program by the 2.3 million dollars. We moved, and we've talked with Mr. Cronin about this, even at those, those levels, we leave the $550,000 in the CIP for rental of space in this model. We leave it there. By the way, we, we, even though it's not shown on this slide, we moved the additional rental of space to the CIP in this model. This model can simply not support the programmatic improvements that we've looked at here in the 90% model, even though we've looked at the 65% model, and absorb that $750,000 in costs for rental of space that we know, under almost any assumption, is coming. And we left the assumption for the startup of old Lincoln School where it was. So the comparison, or do you want me to stop there? I'll run through the comparison and then you can, so the comparison, this is the layout of the comparison. And again, great suggestion, we'll lay out the model opposed, against this. So you see the increases in, in staffing. You see the increases in vice principal, central administration, instructional materials, staffing for school nurses. World language is the same, but again, doesn't add that, that sixth grade component. Custodial repair and maintenance.
So it's not.
What? The K to five is.
Yeah.
But the, but the sixth grade is not. But the K to, right, the K to five is. The technology plan and steps to success is not implemented in this model against the other model. Innovation funding is reduced. The middle level world language program, there it is, Ms. Charlofsky, is not there. The literacy staffing is reduced. The math specialist staffing is reduced. Again, they are now, those aren't number, those are numbers that are much more based on enrollment increases instead of the program that we were trying to, that we're trying to drive. And enrichment and challenge is support and the 550, and I would note the 200,000 that is, hasn't appeared yet, is all driven somewhere else. There's one other thing that I need to point out here that I just want to make sure continues to be on the table. The override scenarios, all of them assume that the enrollment component in the town school partnership disappears. The enrollment component of the town school partnership disappears in all of the assumptions that have been made around these override scenarios. And, and I, I have to say that I believe in the 65% model, that any discussion of the 65% model would need to include, would need to include in order to, to actually advance some of the issues that we've tried to, to build into these models and that we've tried to program for, for the benefit of our teachers, our students, our schools, would have to revisit that conversation about whether that model could factor out or shouldn't factor out some allocation for enrollment in the base town school partnership. So do you want to say a word about this one, Mr. Rowe?
Sure. If you go back to what we were talking about a little while ago, in terms of having to get a $5 million reduction, our original set of recommendations that we proposed last year when we were presenting to the override study committee, separate from the technology budget and special ed and ELL's teacher staffing, was an $8.3 million package. This package still has the technology saved for the $75,000 per year.
Sorry, I didn't say that.
That's okay. We, we reduced the technology was an $8.3 million package. This package still has the technology saved for the $75,000 per year.
Sorry, I didn't say that.
That's okay. We, we reduced the technology package by one position each year, 16, 17, and 18. So, save for that one change in the staffing, the, the full technology budget has remained. And the full special education and ELL teacher staffing has remained. But in order to get to the 95, no, 90, sorry, 90% option, we had to reduce the package by a million six. And the reason we did that, to meet the million four target, was because we added back $200,000 worth of rental of space in FY '17. And then to get to the 65, uh, package, we did another $2.8 million worth of reduction out of the package. The reason we didn't have to do more than that is we took that $550,000 number out. So, can I just go?
Well.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
No, I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask Dr. Fisher-Miller to say a word about a couple of the, the program reductions, particularly, I think, in the 65% model, that, that she can speak to better than I.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to, to, to comment on this. And what's difficult is to paint a clear picture of what this cut would look like. The best I can do is describe for you, maybe in a metaphor, if you will, that, um, when you are shopping in the grocery store and they close down two registers, you have to get in the other line and you wait longer. That's a very, very simple way of saying that this 65% cut changes the fundamental, delivery, if you will, of the instruction and the teaching and learning that the Brookline parents are used to. And I am entertaining questions and requests from parents now with the challenges that we have. And as we talk about a cut of this nature, the parents will not be receiving, their, their, their children will not be receiving the education that they expect. When we talk about the math specialists and their availability, not only for intervention, but for extension. The literacy specialists, not only for intervention, but for actually, uh, um, creating an interdisciplinary unit in science. The science department not actually having all the materials and the updated microscopes or the, um, the microscopes that need to be fixed and, uh, sent out for upgrade, excuse me for, for stumbling on that. But it is about kids sharing and not having what they need at their desk at that time. And what's very, very difficult is our teachers have almost done too good a job of adjusting with less than. And this takes what we have been struggling with now for a few years, and, um, it lops off even, even a greater amount. So, the, you know, going back to science, inquiry science, inquiry science is expensive. It's expensive. It requires, uh, high-quality materials. And so, when we cut our instruction number, our, um, uh, our, thank you, materials, um, number, while you see a number there, what you don't see actually is the material not upgraded, the actual, uh, numbers of materials present in front of kids such that they don't have to share, they don't have to take turns. So, it's an extremely difficult, uh, picture to paint until kids experience it. And then we get the calls. And then we look at our scores, and then we review our data. And our hard-working teachers come to the table and ask, what can they do? What can they do more? What they can do differently? And so, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to actually write the narrative, if you will, that describes the picture. Um, I am much more excited at the opportunity to describe what the 90% can get us and allow us to take the steps that are necessary and that are expected than the, um, the difficult picture that we would be painting with the 65.
Thanks. So. I think so. Oh, Mr. Rowe has two more slides.
Well, I ju, I just wanted to tie the numbers together. I mean, if you don't want to see these, that's fine.
How could I not let you show those slides?
Fine. All I wanted to do was point out that remember our targets from the 12.8 and the 9.2 numbers that would come to us as net revenue over and above the, uh, regular town appropriation, if we got overrides and other funding that yielded the 90% and the 65%. And so, what we've done is we've built our projections, which include all of the costs that we're anticipating, including growth of special education services, which would include both direct service staff and private placement, as well as step and lane growth, collective bargaining at 2%, a contingency in the $225,000 range, and then the other areas which are taken directly from the models that we were talking about. So, I just wanted to show you that this package ties back to the original package that we had been working with. So, this is why, uh, we, we wanted to make it clear that we had to reduce to get to the 90% and we had to reduce significantly further to get to the 65.
Thank you, Bill. Question about laws of unintended consequences between 6, 65% and 90%. So, I'm focusing on the difference in terms of staffing on literacy specialists as well as math specialists between the 65 and 90%. Obviously, substantial reduction in the 65%. So, in light of that, my question is then, the base assumption on special ed funding, is that still valid?
Um, so.
More. You may need more.
I don't think so, right? I, 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 I think we probably need, I mean, it, it reminds me of the class size conversations, right? I mean, people talk about all kinds of things in class size. The one thing that I've seen pretty regularly in, in, in a lot of that research is that you have more referrals in, in larger classes. And if you have more referrals, you have more students who end up with IEPs. If you have more IEPs, you have more district-wide placements. If you have more district-wide placements, you have more out-of-district placements. So, you know, those, those kind, and those costs multiply. So, sure, you may not see X or Y or Z research in, in the area of class size, but, but I think it's pretty consistent that you at least see more referrals. And I think these things, uh, these are interventions, right? And they're interventions that have been, we've talked about a formula, right? I don't know all the pieces. I, I can't, I can't tell you each piece of the formula and how, and what percentage each piece is responsible for some of the successes that we've seen in, in having students served well in Brookline, which means less out-of-district placements, more parents willing to work with us around strategies in Brooklyn. Landmark's certainly been part of that. There are other, there are other pieces that our team facilitators, some of which you see baked into this in terms of the increases to keep, keep pace with our numbers of students. But yeah, there's a consequence. There's a consequence. I mean, we, 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 we believe, because when we studied other districts, we believe that, and we saw that a number of them actually reduced, um, uh, learning support areas, other, other kinds of programs, special education referrals, when, when they implemented the literacy program with fidelity, right? And we believe we will experience that over time. It's going to be, you know, you're not, you know, Dr. Fisher-Miller, Dr. Schmuckler, both remind me that you're not going to see those as evident because remember, we're growing at the same time. But, but, but they are strategies that mean a lot to that individual kid, to that individual parent, and, and may prevent, prevent those kinds. So, sure, there are going to be some of that. You know, I think we said last week that there were certain things that if we, if we did, we were going to have to create a factor for them. I think we have a little bit more work to do in looking at the 65% model and figuring that out. I said, said to you last week that you could take, you could take X amount for, um, I believe, for tutorial, right? And I believe that you're going to draw, have to set over here as a contingency this amount of money for the unintended consequences. I believe that. And I would recommend that in terms of any kind of budgeting, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this, Dr. Lupini. This is, this is, this is great. The, the comparison is really, uh, in particular, is really helpful. One of the things I noticed, um, and you emphasized it as well, is that, you know, you preserve the, the technology funding throughout. That's a choice, you know, in, in terms of where to make reductions and not make reductions. Can you talk a little bit about the motivation to preserve that budget as opposed to spreading it out elsewhere?
So, um, we did look at a couple of scenarios where we actually pushed it out into additional years, as an example. You know, I, I, I think it goes back to the things that we talked about in terms of the improvement in the classroom and, and the individual nature of the, of the experience that we were able to create for kids. I mean, we've seen, you've heard here, you've heard other places about what we've been able to accomplish with the initial investment that we've made this year in terms of the classroom, in terms of what's available for individual students, the avenues for learning that that opens up for kids in the classroom. And, um, and quite frankly, it is not lost upon us that our teachers continue to say, finally, this district begins to feel like the other districts where I had opportunity to go and work. So, it was not an area, again, given that we view this plan, we don't view this plan as extravagant. We view this plan as pretty much basic, um, uh, you know, utilities in the, on the wall, kind of, kind of a plan. We were worried about backing, about backing off of that for all of those reasons.
May I just offer a very quick anecdote? Um, so, I had a conversation very recently with Cory Stott, who you have met as our Director of Research and Accountability. And Cory has identified a tool for us that would allow us to, teachers, to input immediately assessment data, both in math and in literacy on a regular basis. And it then creates a picture of every child's assessments when, in fact, may I remind you, that the assessments that we are using are not like kids taking tests. All right? They sometimes don't even know they're being assessed. They are doing a particular activity, both in math and in literacy. And we talked about that tool and how excited we are all about that tool and the inability right now for us to make a multi-year commitment to that tool, that we're looking at a one-year commitment right now because we don't know how far out we're going to be able to go with, um, technology, as one example. In the absence of having accurate data on where students are across the board, we can't then tailor that instruction very specifically to that child so that every student is advancing and learning regardless of where they start. It's just a quick anecdote of, of our reality.
I know I probably shouldn't mix these yet. Probably like mixing bad alcohol, but, um, which is all I can think about right now at 9:30. But, as you've thought about what you shared on the, on the options for short-term and long-term space, and now we talk about operational budget.
Yeah.
I'm making the assumption that, let's say we got 90% and we picked option X, we'd still be okay to implement 90%. In other words, is there anything we should be thinking about and, or understanding in terms of any trade-offs that what happens over here affects what happens over there? Or have you all figured all that out in the sense that like, no programming is programming if we get mobiles, if we get, if we move kids here, there, or elsewhere? We can still generally execute against these different scenarios without too much fluctuation? Is that a safe assumption?
Yes, we have, and, and yes, we believe that's the case. Thank you for that question, though. It's a really, it's a really good one because these, these, these two things, there's a great deal of interaction here. Um, and, and we did have those discussions in creating both.
So, I just want to, um, I thank Jennifer for, um, those two anecdotes, which were really helpful, and, and get back just one more time to reinforce what Lisa said earlier, which is that, I mean, we all know these numbers pretty well, and they are hard to absorb without, without the narrative. And so, especially for audiences that are not as familiar with them.
Yes.
That narrative is so crucial.
We'll, we'll have that for the 10th, and we'll make sure you see it before then.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Just a detailed question. I thought I saw at the beginning of the 65, an assumption of two consolidations
Sorry.
versus one in the previous model.
Sorry, I skipped over.
What does, what does that mean, that we just assume that we can consolidate more classrooms? Does that ultimately mean we assume that we're going to have larger class size?
It, it does. It, it means, it means that some of those things I probably got red in the face talking about earlier, we might have to do. We, we have, we have to be more careful with those kinds of assignments. We, we might have to violate some of those, but we, because one we can get, the second one has to be driven with strategies beyond where we are now. Yes.
You'll spell that out in terms of the negative consequence that's embedded into that assumption.
But, um, but we will. Yeah.
Thank you.
Following up on Lisa's question, um, and maybe I don't understand it as well, but I thought that there would be a difference if we went at the, just the cost of, uh, the, um, excuse me, borrowing just for devotion versus borrowing a higher amount for the debt exclusion.
Yeah, no, that isn't what, that, that isn't what I thought I was asked. I thought I was asked about operating budget implications.
Right. So, I was, I was asking, if, if you go back to our first conversation about options for short-term solutions to space.
Right.
And, and let's say we, we create some composite of three different things we're going to do out of that, which I know sits in the debt exclusion space. And then we say, we, let's say we get 65% or 90%, whatever it is. I was just trying to test the assumption that what we got, that we could do on the programming side, on the operational side, regardless of which options we picked and vice versa. I was just trying to make sure that, that that was the right assumption to hold as opposed to saying, you know what, if we actually picked this option and this option, we couldn't do the technology plan this way, or we, these numbers would change because we couldn't, we do something different with nursing. I'm totally making it up, but.
But the technology plan is the one where we probably played with this the most, and we're pretty confident of that, of that plan within those assumptions. Does that make sense? So, we have some, oh, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
There's a lot of stuff in this plan that you've presented tonight that is kind of difficult to wrap your head around. And I like the notion of the narrative that Lisa has brought up. And I'm wondering if it's possible for us as a committee to have a discussion about that narrative before we take it to the Board of Selectment. I mean, it might, it might mean adding an extra meeting. But it would, I think it would be very helpful, um, for all of us to really have a better grasp of this, if that's something we could do.
Um, no, actually, um, not for next week. It's not. And, um, I'm cognizant of the amount of time that I asked senior staff to take away from everything else that they did this week to devote to these two tasks and, and the timing to get this narrative done, which we certainly can do. Um, and then I'm, and then I'm also worried on the other end about what I do out of that conversation were to occur from middle on of next week and how I get that ready for the 10th. So, those are, those are the two most immediate thoughts that came to mind. But, uh, you know, within that, I, I, yeah, I, I have, I have MCN and, and MASC next week. But can certainly, I, I think I said to the chair, um, I would be available, I think, Thursday night. I'd have to cut MASC short to do that, but I could be here Thursday evening.
So, why don't we, I mean, I'm hearing enough discomfort on the narrative that I think we need to talk about how we're going to do this next week. Why don't we try to skip on this offline? But I'm hearing, oh, okay. We'll try to find, try to figure out something.
And to be clear, I, I don't, I didn't mean to suggest that I had discomfort with the narrative as much as to the extent that there is a narrative that you are using
Yeah.
as you're doing this. I know for us, you may have just gone straight to it, but to lift that up and make it explicit is sort of what I was hoping for.
I can give you a timeline on that tomorrow, on when you'll have that in your hands. I want to talk to senior staff about it, but I, I'll do it tomorrow.
Um, all right. We might actually be at the end of our school training meeting, possibly. Uh, is there any, thank you, thank you. Yeah, I mean, the school training workshop, basically, we talked about everything we talked about tonight. And we can still, so, that's my.